Good morning. It's nine o'clock, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. Our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our County Clerk, Mary James Aviato. No, and Tilly Cottrell is Assistant Chief Assistant, Turk.
Yeah, Chief.
Okay, all right. Sitting in, thank you for being with us today.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioner, Judge Rathol.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gasso.
Present.
Judge, we have a call.
Thank you, Senator. Our next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Mitter, Commissioners' Court chaplain.
Good morning.
Dr. Mitter, good morning. Good to see you.
Good to be here. It's about our heads if we would this morning. Let's pray, our Father, give her wisdom to those who ask. We're reminded today of the words found in Proverbs fifteen twenty-two. It said, "Plains fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors they succeed." So your word again provides for us the answers to our present needs. So we approach today in this assembly believing that as we trust in your guidance and as we seek your wisdom, our greatest needs in this county and in our lives will be met. So we ask for special enabling for our leaders to govern the people of this county. May our leaders govern with justice and also mercy, with strength and also compassion, and with boldness and also humility. But may they be granted the ability to receive your counsel and to apply it to the needs before them today as they prepare themselves. So prepare our judge and our commissioners as they fully realize the responsibilities which they shoulder and also from where their strength comes to handle those responsibilities. And in the name of the one who has come and the one who is coming again, in Christ's name we pray this today. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, item four, communications. Any things you'd like to share with the public, the court at this time?
Yes, Judge, we do have Tech dot that will be hosting their adopt the highway program April first. So for any groups interested, it'll be April first this coming Saturday. Any nonprofit organization groups are eligible to join. So this will be good to start cleaning highways and, you know, CSDPS with that, I mean, Tech dot, sorry.
Yes, I think it's a very good program. I know there's a few sections of highway throughout the county that have been adopted. But it's certainly very helpful to Tech dot crews. I think all of us are in constant contact with Tech dot. I recall one a few weeks ago on four ninety-six. And they were very responsive, bringing their own crews to clean up the highway. You know, trash is a problem. So we still try to keep our roadways clean, especially around town. I think for the most part, since we went to a, I think, to a, I guess, a qualified provider for trash pickup, at least eighty-three has certainly improved in that respect. There's not a lot of as much trash flying off vehicles that there was before. But there is, it's still an issue. I know there's several organizations throughout the county as I mentioned. But yeah, anybody interested, we would appreciate the help, yes.
We will be picking up four ninety-six as well. My crew will be there on Saturday. So if anybody wants to join, we'll be out there at four ninety-six.
So we're seeing three crews going to adopt. So that's very good, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Yes, I drive on that highway every day, so that would be nice to.
Whatever we can do to help.
For any hours for NHS and stuff.
Yeah, also the NHS, they will get credit for hours as well. So it's a very good program for high school students and middle school as well. So we'll be reaching out to middle school. We got a board member out there, so it's a good program. Just have them get with us and we'll give them that credit.
I know the residents of four ninety-six intersection thirty-seven four.
Yeah.
All the residents there at one time formed a group. And I was part of it, the Friends of Thirty-seven Four. We still have that as an adoption highway. We haven't gotten together. I think it's important that maybe we get together again and have a trash pickup on that section. So, yeah, there are some highways that have been adopted. And maybe, and I can speak for my son, maybe we're not as active as we should be. But I think it's worth the effort.
The son will bring you back?
Yeah.
I also want to thank Renesa Salinas of Salinas Nursery. And that's made the, they donated six trees for the Blessed San Inacio. That was a great contribution, about four hundred and fifty dollars, about seventy-five dollars a tree. Those trees were planted to honor a very beloved family who has previously passed, Lilia M. Salinas, Vicente Luna, Norma Alicia Salinas, Dico Salinas, Zilda Salinas, and Adam Salinas. The donation is part of the ongoing community program to enhance the natural environment there in San Inacio. So again, we thank Mr. Salinas and the reprieve for the birds and butterflies. So if anyone has any contribution or want to be members of that organization, just get in contact with Renesa Salinas. And again, thank you, Renesa Salinas.
Very, very.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you've been very active and very special with the projects. So appreciate that you're there. Yesterday, I prepared a word that was March twenty-sixth with epilepsy awareness, which is Purple Day. And it's celebrated annually on March twenty-sixth. And it was created to increase the public's understanding of this brain disorder and to eliminate the fear and stigma surrounding it. With over three point five million people diagnosed with epilepsy in the United States and over fifteen million worldwide, it is likely, you know, someone didn't with that amulet day-to-day. And I believe they had a, I think some leaders got together and had lemonade stand yesterday on Purple Day. And they're on Z-Wind. And so I appreciate their efforts in bringing attention, awareness to that disorder. I wanted to give an update on our lake levels. I think all of us know how desperate our situation has become. I think we were dealing with these lake levels sometime last year in July. And it became a critical situation for the county in trying to just be able to draw water to service our needs for our residents. We're there in March. And I've had conversations on a weekly basis with the water master in the valley. And I don't foresee any immediate relief unless we get some torrential rainfalls and improve our situation. It is rather unfortunate that we have Falcon Reservoir at ten percent. Of course, Amistad is not in ideal condition, but it's there, close to fifty percent, forty-six percent. But I can't seem to make the argument that it seems Falcon Reservoir is just being used as a pass-through lake. They, their decision not to store any water in Falcon is certainly very hurtful to our community. And they just stopped, I've been on the phone with our state legislatures and see if we can get some help and bring attention to our county who basically sacrificed our homes and our lands. And now we can't seem to convince TCQ to, the water master, to store any water in Falcon. So as y'all can see, our boat ramps are out of the water. And of course, a lot of it is with the drought, but there is water in the system. And I think they could be more, I guess, reactive to our needs and sympathetic to what is going on in our community. And I can't stress enough how important it is to conservation of water. We're at a level now that we will probably start using our emergency pumps to draw water for our community needs. And it's certainly not a good situation to be in. So currently, the lake level's at two fifty-five twenty-seven. I think the historic low is two fifty-three. And so it's almost forty-six feet below capacity. And it just, I'm trying to get more water released from Amistad. Hopefully, we can urge our, and I urge the community to be involved and write letters to our representatives and our, those, especially the water master, to address the needs of our community. We're once again being passed over. It's certainly not a good feeling. I thought I'd mention that this morning. Any other communications, Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, we also had Border Region. They did celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. They had a beautiful event last Wednesday. So I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for that event. It was very nice. It was from three to five P.M. And I had Border Region next to Stripes. So I want to give them a shout out. That was very awesome. It was beautiful.
Thank you. I say thank you, Commissioner, for attending. I appreciate that. Anything else? We'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any item on the agenda. Any members of the public who should address the court at this time? If not, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. In your practice, Commissioner, we had invoices from March the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three through March the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, for a total of five hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis to approve invoices presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is approval of checks issued. And in your practice, we had checks from three thirteen, twenty twenty-three through three twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. And the total is, should be the same, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, four sixty-nine and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're moving on to reports and presentations. Item number eight is a presentation from David Quinn, Program Manager of Public Power Pool P3 regarding P3's twenty twenty-two group-wide procurement for the county's new electricity contract with MP2 Energy Shell Energy Solutions for fiscal years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. Mr. Quinn, good to see you again.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you today.
Well, it's that time again, huh?
It's that time again. We're not looking for any action today. I just wanted to give you an update. Last time I was here, I didn't.
Yes.
So I just wanted to give you an update on where we are and what happened with the last cycle that we just went through. Does a blue folder in front of you?
Yes.
With a presentation on the right-hand side. Just by way of background, my name is David Quinn. I'm the Program Manager for Public Power Pool. We're a five oh one C fault that was subject to incorporation that was created by Texas Counties to drive down rates by procuring involved and negotiate that contract to provide full service for a dollar price. We've got ninety-five members. We show you the current membership list on page two. Our record to date on page three shows a hundred and ninety-three million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand savings against markets as a program began in two thousand and two. For Zapata County on page four, your savings as part of that is one point, one point, one and a quarter minute since you joined at the beginning of the program. We've given you with this since the beginning. And just to show you the volatility in the marketplace, Judge, the last time I presented to you in two thousand and nineteen, our calculation of your savings at that time is six hundred and forty-three thousand. So your savings has doubled in the past three years due to the volatility in the marketplace and because of the security that the P3 contract gives you by giving you a fixed rate. There's a different way of calculating savings, just so you know. As the PUC has us calculate on behalf of what they call the whole average savings each year. Showing you that on page five, in two thousand and twenty-one, our calculation is you save two hundred and sixty-one thousand just in that year against markets. That's comparing the rate that you pay with the P3 compared to what you would pay on the open marketplace if there was no other way. Just to tell you about how we did the last procurement. When, I think, Judge, last time I was here to present to you all, we were at the beginning of the competitive participation process from procurement. And we were asking if you wanted to stay with the group, continue on, we talked that.
And the court decided to.
And you all did, yes. And we appreciate you continuing the participation program. Don't you know that this is.
So how is the outlook look for the private market?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay, let's get to, well, let's get to the real.
Yeah, let's get to the real issue. The, when we did this procurement in two thousand and twenty-one, we sent out the RFP to every residential retailer and providers, what we would send out to everybody. We want to make sure that the opportunity to bid on this contract is open to everybody. At a hundred and fifty-four retailer providers in the state of the business. So we had developed a short list. We had negotiated contracts. And then a combination of economic and climatic factors, everything from the ice storm in twenty, in twenty twenty through the central grid distress, inflation, demand-side balances, subsequent hot summer, Ukraine war, all this led to a lot of market volatility in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. So we had the layup procurement until the end of last year. When we pulled the trigger in October twenty twenty-two, we locked in a rate fee of five point one eight cents. Now, this is more than you were paying before. Obviously, prices have gone up in the past couple of years. And you were paying in the three cent range before.
I believe that is.
Now you're paying five point one eight cents. That was the lowest price that we were able to get from all of our contract providers when we executed in October twenty twenty-two. Now, our recommendation at that time was for a three-year contract because there's no material benefit going out longer than three years at that time. We are already planning for the next procurement. We want to see what market prices are available. We watch the market price monitors every single day to see what the trend is. And if we flip forward to page eleven.
So were these rates negotiated when the price of natural gas was treated high? Because it was there, it was high for a few months, but now it's at drop bottom once again.
Yeah, we negotiated that price in October of twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Prices were coming down. They had been a lot higher in the summer of twenty twenty-two, the spring of twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-one, it was really difficult to beat that price because of.
So what would be, in your estimation, the price on the open market right now as natural gas prices are now?
For our, for our current three-year term?
Yeah.
I would have to evaluate on that, Judge. There won't be quite an exact price for the current three-year term. Because we would have to compare the price that we locked in in October twenty twenty-two to what's available right now for the same term period.
I think when we locked it in in twenty twenty-two, I think if we compared to our current prices, I think it's about the same as far as natural gas, which is.
Right.
So it's a pretty market increase of five dollars and ninety-seven. It seems almost about sixty percent increase.
Yeah, it's, it, the increase announced to increase of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and nine miles in counties in twenty twenty-two, in that county in twenty twenty-one.
I mean, as we budget, I like being involved in the power pool. We budget the same amount every year, but surely, so there's no way of trying to get a better rate than what you're proposing?
That, so, so when we did the current contract, just when we began to procurement, we've been looking for a term that is for everything up to ten years. And we made the informed decision based on the pricing that was solicited and received for a range of different terms, everything from three, five, seven, ten.
This price is already locked in as a price group.
What we did was minimize exposure. We locked in just for the three years. So we're already out there looking to see what we'll be able to do for twenty twenty-six onwards because we think prices are starting to come down. And if you look at that, that little graph on page.
The targets that.
And how many contractors did you all talk to or negotiate with, Mr. Quinn?
So there are a hundred and, when we began to procurement, there were a hundred and fifty-four retail providers to vegetable DPCs, to do business in Texas. As we, we sent out the RFP to every single one of us, every contact that provided to us by the PUC that receives invitation to bid on the RFP. Realistically, of those hundred and fifty-four, there are probably twenty to thirty that would, that would have the credit rating.
Okay.
And would have the back office support, the ability to get on and handle a load of this size. All the household names, you know, the Lion, TXG, Champion, Jex, Semper, Cavallo, and E.T. All of the big names would be in the mix. Those were the ones that made it onto our initial long list. And as we went through a process of negotiating contracts with each of those retailers, we've narrowed that down by the recommendations of the three quarters. We see pricing for four, the shortest of four. So it's a very thorough process of about from a hundred and fifty-four to twenty, down to four, the order.
And this was the best price you could.
This was the best price, yes. And in this contract transition, if there's a previous provider, this Cavallo, Champion. You know, we have awarded, unlike a lot of brokers, we're not the holder. Anyone who's settled, we're not trying to skip a business to one provider that we have a relationship with. You know, we're in this game to make sure we get the best and worst possible price. So when we awarded to MP two, they're probably the, the ten providers that we have awarded contracts to over the past fifteen years. So we're always looking for improvements. We're always looking to make sure the contract contains provisions to protect your interest and defend tax benefit. We want to make sure we have the best possible contract for Texas counties. A lot of retailers don't want to do that. A lot of retailers want us to sign their contract. We have to lift that equation around to ensure that they sign our ideal contract that should be a negotiated position for rent. So we had a lot of leverage in the marketplace to get a better contract. And because of the bulk, because of the size of the purchase, the size of the group, means we're able to communicate on this. Capulation is on any single day in the retail market. If an SD and P3 would be out there procuring by itself at the same time as we do for the group, they'll pay maybe half to a third of that more if they want. So that's the advantage of the bulk purchasing program. So we're combining your lower ninety-five open political subdivisions. Some of the biggest political subdivisions in the state, right there. There is a, there is a transactional board on the left-hand side of the folder that gives you the details of how we can deal with the methodology of the issues.
Appreciate that.
Just that one. But just to look ahead, Judge, I'll make this quick. That, that graph on page eleven.
I'm going to hunker to the.
That, that graph on page eleven shows you where the market is going. And we think the price is going to come down. And we're looking at politics, a spot near the chairman later on in the show, which is fine before he'll come back.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Solis. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, I mentioned we do have a rather lax agenda on our transaction items. I'd like to maybe get our resolution and proclamations out of the way. We'll move on to item number thirty. There's a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And this is the first about Dr. Selita Sanchez, Director of Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank you.
Dr. Sanchez, I know you enjoy our meetings, but.
Good morning. Good morning, Mother Reverend Selita Sanchez, Executive Director for the Children's Advocacy Center. And the reason we are here today is because it's obviously one of the thanks Zapata, Zapata County and surrounding areas for everything you do for children. The month of April is known as Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is an annual observance dedicated to raising awareness and prevention of child abuse. Child abuse is widespread and too often invisible. It is one of the most common problems of the world. And the main types of child abuse include physical, sexual, and emotional. And I'm going to stop reading because I want to, I want to go back before the pandemic that I came here. And I made a call to the Boys and Girls Club. I was at the Civic Center in Laredo, and I was presenting on something. And I asked Zapata, the Boys and Girls Club, I didn't know who else to call. And I said, I need a place because we have a lot of children. At that time, we had a lot of children, middle of the case. And they're missing school. That was my thing. They're missing school. The children are missing school and were leaving Zapata without law enforcement. Because what was happening was that your folks from the school district were driving the child to us. So, thank you, sir, Mr. Mendoza, and thank you, Judge. And of course, thank you, Commissioners. Because of you, we now have almost a full working satellite office here at the, where the drug is licensed is. We have our counseling center, and I'll introduce you to him in a minute. And then we also, you also allowed us to use one of the portals. And at that portal, we have fully, fully supplied, and we wrote a grant, and we got the money. And it's working one hundred percent for our forensic. So your children, our children, do not have to drive to Laredo anymore. Instead, we come here to you. We provide services to the children, and that's what it's all about. It's about children and not taking anything from anyone. But muchisimas gracias on behalf of the children of the surrounding area, Zapata, and for their non-offending family members, perpetrators, I won't tell you what I think. They don't, for their family members, thank you so much. And I want to introduce you to, to, the first thing is when an allegation is being made immediately, law enforcement or child protective services should be contacted. One misconception is that when there is a forensic interview, an interview, it's not an investigation. We don't conduct investigations, that the parents are going to sit there. Parents are not going to sit there. The only ones that are going to sit there is the, for instance, explain briefly, is the interviewer and the child that who has made the allegation. And on the other side is the, is the agency who brought the child, but not the parent. Because you never know, the parent may be the perpetrator. So after that, on Thursdays, and we're going to move into Zapata. I don't have a problem unless, you'd say, I don't have a problem. We'll move into Zapata. On Thursdays at two o'clock in Laredo, we have this call in MDT, a multidisciplinary team meeting. And all of the partner agencies come. Right now, sometimes we have Zapata with their cases going over there. And I already spoke to Pete Picasa and said, Pete, you know, we'll come to Zapata, and we'll do another one over here so that you don't stay without law enforcement. We need to make this a full-fledged satellite office. So for, just so you can know, this is, this is Vero. Vero, as our forensic interviewer, has many, many years of experience. And our experience and training comes from Austin. And then, of course, we have our therapist. He comes twice a week to Zapata. And I'll, and talk just for a minute. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez.
Hi, good morning. Well, my name is Anorika Valdez, and I work at the Children's Advocacy Center. How Dr. Sanchez mentioned, I've been there for fifteen years already. I started as an advocate and then became, you know, forensic interviewer. And, you know, and just want to let you know and thank you for allowing us to use the buildings that we're using right now so we can come to Zapata and provide services for your kids and, and of course, your family as well. And, you know, it's really good to come, you know, we come on Tuesdays and Wednesdays when there's interviews. And, but when there's a forensic interview that needs to, like, it needs an emergency service, they go to Laredo, of course. We don't come all the time, and I just have company. I went on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. But when the officers think it's, it needs to be like, you know, interview the child as soon as possible that way, you know, the child doesn't forget things about the abuse, then the officers from Mr. de Loscas, the Sheriff Department, they take him to Laredo. But other than that, we come like, you know, once or twice a week when it's needed. And I just want to thank you all for having us here.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So I've been working at the CDC for four, going on five years already. The whole time I've been covering Zapata. Over the past year, we've already done a hundred and seventy-six sessions here at Zapata County. That's translated to eleven clients, ten children, one adult that received therapy services. Currently, my caseload is six, six clients that I see here on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Next month, I'm already going to get two additional ones. So we're still very busy here, but we're still doing the service to fight the fight against child abuse.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. In case of an allegation of penetration or rape or something, and we need to take them for a sanitary sand, which is very, very invasive. We did have to have an MOU memorandum of understanding. We either take them to the valley or we take them to San Juan. This is no nonsense. This is a very invisible, very dark topic that we talk about, but it is what it is. So thank you so much. And like I said, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and this is why we are here.
Thank you so much.
Muchisimas gracias. And one last thing, in, in April nineteen, you'll see it, of course, you're welcome. You don't need to pay. We're having our conference in Laredo, and you will be surprised about the outstanding topics we have. And we do give the hours that you need for the attorneys, and we do give the law enforcement hours. And what it is, is we have, of course, Mr. Chilo Alanis that will be doing our, our audience always asks, and we read and we listen. They ask for one local case. So we're having the case of San Lopez, very sad case that happened in Laredo. And then the other cases are, this is phenomenal, if anything. This one case, John.
Terminate.
No, you have the lady, the one, the lady. No, you have the lady, the one, the lady, she was on Netflix in November. This man, the perpetrator, the perpetrator was able to groom the child twice. And he abducted her twice. And then he got the mother involved and had a sexual affair with the mother and with the father, just so he could get to the child. And it was on Netflix, and I watched it. It took me two days to watch an hour movie because it made me sick, and things don't make us sick. I thought we had thick skins. But you need to watch that, you need to come and see. Her name is John Bajo.
It's on Mark, it's on their agenda.
It's on your agenda, it's grooming.
On the file.
And that's what's happening, that's what's happening right now. Along with mental health, the other thing is, is that grooming, where somebody becomes your friend, and I start smiling at you, and I'll buy you a candy, and I'll do this and I'll do that. And you know what? This fellow, of course, because of the end, big deal, has, um, he was able to groom the child twice. Thirteen years old. The whole city, if you will, except everybody loved him. And then the mother had an affair with the mother, so he could get into the house. And then he noticed that the father was not liking this. So, you know what, I'll have another one. You have to see this, you really do. So I invite you and, um, thank you for allowing us to use. Judge, thank you so much, Judge Ratnall, for everything you do for children and for everything you do for the Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank you very much. For all you do.
Thank you.
Now, we have a resolution also, uh, we've got, I don't know, it's very national.
Does, does that require action on the proclamation?
Well, I don't know, it's just a proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Resolutions do require action, a proclamation, I usually just sign it. And we can read it out, be live. But, uh, to approve the resolution in support to recognize April as National Autism Awareness Month?
Do I need to add, Commissioners? Like every year that I think, um, before you, I just would like to recognize April as National Autism Awareness Month. Which, when we got that.
Yes, the resolution.
Where it states, whereas April has been designated as National Autism Awareness Month by the Autism Society of America. And whereas autism spectrum disorders are classified as a variety of complex disabilities, which include autistic disorder, childhood dysintegrative disorder, pervasive developmental disorder, and Asperger's syndrome. That is a developmental disability characterized by atypical development in socialization, communication, and behavior. And whereas approximately one in every forty-four children have been diagnosed as falling in the autism spectrum disorder, and the prevalence of children with autism has increased and is the fastest-growing developmental disability. And whereas autism knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries, and neither income, lifestyle, nor education affects the occurrence. And whereas a single cause is not known, but the need for early intervention services begins soon after a child has been diagnosed with autism. Because early intervention is a key component needed to treat people with autism later in life. And whereas National Autism Awareness Month was conceived to educate the community and celebrate opportunities associated with living, attending school, and working alongside individuals with autism spectrum disorders in their families. And whereas with support, people with autism can live full productive lives and make meaningful contributions to society and the community. And now therefore be a result, that the Zapata County Commissioners Court acknowledges the month of April as Autism Awareness Month. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion, by Commissioner Mendoza, second, by Commissioner Solis. Yes. And technically, I, I think you've been a great community advocate, uh, in awareness of autism, so thank you for what you do. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, do you have a seat? We can hear items twenty-nine and thirty.
Item nine is, uh, yeah, we can, two requests to use a Zapata Community Center on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, by Workforce Solutions Subfixes for Hiring Event. Good morning.
Hi, hello, Doctor Mendoza, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ms. Salinas and Ms. Batines. Um, we are here on behalf of Workforce Solutions Subfixes. Our Executive Director, Rojo Trevino, submitted a letter for today's meeting.
Yes.
Um, basically, what we'd like to do is collaborate with Zapata and host a hiring event here in some of the Texas. Uh, we do have a center here, it's quite small. So we are asking if.
I'm, I'm charged.
Yes, yes, all the services that we offer.
So, small but big service.
I'm getting it, I'm getting it, I'm getting it. So basically, what we'd like to do is, uh, host a hiring event, um, a large hiring event, right, that will benefit both the job seekers and employers of Zapata, Laredo, and surrounding areas. So, um, we would like to request the use of this Zapata Community Center to be able to host all of the employers.
Guys, will you confirm the availability to you in the Dallas?
I.
Uh, yes, she said that it would be during the week that we cannot ask for, uh, Friday or Saturday.
Yes.
But it is available for this day.
They could be on the eleventh or twelfth.
Uh, April nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Okay, so nineteenth would be the following Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, be on a Wednesday, yeah, so that, it'll be available, maybe.
April nineteenth?
Yes, we want to see if we can get a little bit over maybe twenty employers, a mixture of Laredo and Zapata together.
Okay, so on the agenda, it's April, because we have April fourteenth of the event. Okay, motion to approve, uh, to.
Motion, by Commissioner Solis, second, by Commissioner Solis. I did get a, I guess, the opportunity to walk through your brand-new office building there in Laredo. And that's very impressive. Hopefully, uh, Workforce Solutions can build something similar there, maybe, or half the size, maybe.
We also like for you a temporary event as well, just to be part of the community.
I, I certainly.
We always have an opening ceremony.
A very impressive, uh, office building that you have. Motion, and the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, aye. Item number thirty is to recruit the use of the Romeo Ford precinct lawn park for a benefit car show and cook-off on April first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second, by Commissioner Mendoza. Is Zapata here this morning?
Yes, he's there.
Yeah, maybe you can inform the court what exactly is going to be the activity with Zapata. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, a couple of years ago, uh, I started a, a small car club. And, uh, you know, we're very blessed to be able to work on these cars, and we wanted to somehow help the community. And so we decided to start doing, uh, a car show, and it just, last year I did it within six weeks, and it blew up. And now it's gotten international, we're getting cars from all over the place, so.
Well, I've heard good, uh, good stuff about it from Laredo, so a lot of the people are.
Last year's event, yeah, it's very successful.
Thank you. So this year, we'd like to help a little girl that has cancer and a, uh, a couple that had been through some times, so, uh, um, this is the first time I've ever, I'm in trouble, pining the door to get in here, so, uh, but I'm learning as I go, and, uh, next year I'll definitely do it more time.
So for the public to know, a hundred percent of the proceeds will go to those families?
Hundred percent of the proceeds goes to the, the family, and I get, trying to, to the founding members that they, in front of everyone. So, uh, the only way that our car club makes any kind of money is if you buy shit, so.
And our facilities are, our facilities are available to you at least whenever you need them, so thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Going back. Did everybody consider actions on the following items? Item number nine is to consider expanding the Texas Department of Public Safety Driver License Division Office, including, uh, office furniture at Zapata County Community Center. Commissioners, that, you know, we're very fortunate as a community to have a, this, uh, service in our community, and, uh, currently, they're, they're using, uh, basically, uh, I would say, a couple square hundred feet of, of office space, they've got room. There is, uh, an opportunity to expand within, uh, there, I think there's three more offices. Uh, they're probably ten by ten office cubicles. And, uh, one is currently used from time to time by the Laredo Housing Authority. We could, uh, relocate them, uh, to one of the, uh, offices, I guess, in the rear of the building, and then, uh, remove walls between the other two offices and, and basically double the space they have. Uh, and, uh, I did speak with Leslie with the evidence, and they are in need of some office furniture. It, it'll be a minimal expense to the county, and I think the overall benefit is tremendous to have that office here, so. I, what I told her and her supervisor is, uh, anything that we can do as a county to keep you happy and keep the service here available to our community, I'm in favor of that. Motion to approve, by Commissioner Morales, second, by Commissioner Ocasio. Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Serica, they are going to require the minutes, the, the state is wanting the minutes of the approval. We can expedite at least these minutes, uh, until merging.
Yeah.
Uh, it won't move forward unless they.
Have, have we done a contract review yet to look at all that?
No, no, we haven't, uh, so, uh, we will, uh, bring that up. Uh, they just wanted the approval before.
For the expansion?
Yes, they want, they will bring in some, uh, some plans, uh, limited plans and specs to, to what they would need. But basically, it's knocking down a few walls. They are wanting to include a, uh, a see-through, uh, window, uh, in one of the offices, so they can, uh, see the lobby, see the people that are in the lobby area, so it, it's going to be a minimal, uh, remodel, uh, there, and, uh, and we'll see what type of office furniture they request, but I'll, I'll bring those before the board for approval.
Thank you.
Item number ten is to consider an award administrative services, uh, for the twenty twenty-three Colonia Fund CFC, uh, Colonia Fund Construction, CFC, from the Texas Department of Agriculture. So this, as you know, we, we do have two Colonia, uh, fund, uh, projects ongoing, and this would be for the next round of, of, uh, of applications. Uh, I think, uh, moving forward, once we select an administrator, that the court will come in and, and select projects that, uh, certainly, uh, would be beneficial to our community and that qualify as a Colonia project. And so today, we're, we're, uh, I guess, selecting administrative services. As, as, uh, as is common practice, we, we, uh, do have a committee to score, uh, those applicants that are interested in providing their services to the county. And, uh, you know, our county auditor, uh, Commissioner Tufa Montanes, along with Ms. Betty Trevino and Ms. Rocke, they do the scoring. They, they've done this for, for many, many years, and, and there is, uh, certain criteria that they look at, and, uh, so, uh, I'll just let Tufa, uh, kind of, tell us the results of their committee findings.
Say, good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, we did the scoring, uh, Friday, and I do want to note, uh, on this, uh, there are three people, three companies that, uh, applied or sent their, their information in. Carlos Paredes, Las Vegas, and Associates, Esser and Company, and Grant Works. Uh, the, the proposed grant request is for a million dollars. The proposal, proposals for their fees were Colina Vargas, thirty thousand, Esser and Company, forty thousand, uh, Grant Works, fifty-five-nine. From that, we also, there, uh, I'm not just saying put it in your packets, our scoring, it is. So, we, we, you can go through there and see, uh, what we've, uh, what we looked at and how we scored it. We scored it with, uh, Colina Vargas, and, and there is weight given to what their fees are, so that is, uh, adjusted in, into the, into the.
Into the final score.
Into the final score, that's correct, into the final score. So, Colina Vargas came with a total of two thirty-four, Esser and Company with two seventy-nine, and Grant Works at two sixty-one. So our, the recommendation of the committee was Esser and Company.
What's your recommendation of Esser and Company? Motion by Commissioner Solis, they're saying, by Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
To, uh, approve the recommendations of, of the committee and, uh, award the administrative services to Esser and Company. Although, any other discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven is to consider an award engineering services for the twenty twenty-three Colonia Fund Construction CFC from the Texas Department of Agriculture.
I believe the recommendation was premier engineering?
It was, he was the only, I think he was the only one that, that, uh, sent their information.
Motion to approve a premier engineering judge for the engineering services.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Mendoza to, uh, to approve premier engineering as the engineer, uh, for the Colonia Fund Construction, twenty twenty-three, second, by Commissioner Solis. Any other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And on that, Judge, uh, Rossi does send out information, newspaper, and contact several engineers, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're fortunate that premier engineering, uh, does excellent work, and, uh, but yeah, they're the only ones to help. And we, we do, we do, uh, provide the required notices, yeah, for all groups to, 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 uh, to, you know, bring in their bids. Item number twelve is to consider an award administrative services for the Congressional Directive Spending Community Facilities Grant for the Texas County, for the Zapata County Fire Department from USDA Rural Development. And of course, Commissioners, this is a, an earmark that we were able to acquire with the help of, of Congressman Fuego. And this is a two million dollar grant, which the county is, is, of course, uh, matching a considerable amount. Uh, but this would be, hopefully, to, to build a grand new, uh, fire station for our community. And, uh, so we do, it does require administrative services. I think the same process was made?
Correct.
Same process.
Same process on this one, Colina Vargas, uh, just so for your information on their, uh, their fee was twenty-two thousand, and Esser and Company was sixty thousand. I want to point that out, because it is a large difference, but, uh.
Judge, but I can see that in, in the score, and he's got all the available amounts.
Yes, correct, maybe say that a hundred percent, and then, uh, the other ones.
Motion to approve an award to Esser and Company, as recommended, actually.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to award to Esser and Company, second, by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirteen is to consider an award engineering services for the Congressional Directive Spending Community Facilities Grant for the Zapata County Fire Department from the USDA Rural Development.
Motion to make a warrant to premier engineering, second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to award premier engineering, second, by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And he's the only, also.
Again, same situation.
So we are back to the primary area of being, uh, interested in our projects, which are very good projects that are, are going to be coming to our community, so. Uh, item, uh, number fourteen is to approve a part-time position for Zapata County Community Center. Commissioner, I put this item on, we, uh, just speaking with, with the director there, Ms. Lagarasa, she has two, uh, personnel that, uh, take care of several, uh, pretty large buildings. I, you know, she has requested additional help. I said, well, we don't have a permanent position, but I'll, I'll bring it to, to the court. Uh, and this will also include, uh, cleaning, uh, services for, I think, the precinct floor office and then the pavilion, so.
Are we not doing contract show cleanup anymore?
No.
After our, after the events are over?
No, I, I don't believe so. But this will, uh, allow her to maintain the facility in tip-top shape. You're looking at ten dollars an hour, twenty hours a week, I think, for the six or eight months that are remaining in our, our budget year.
It's six months.
Maybe five, six thousand dollars.
Six months.
It'll be part-time to the. Yes, yes. Well, make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Solis, second, by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to amend the Zapata County budget to reflect the salary increase for employees participating in operations. Those are, those commissioners are reoccurring items. We had a meeting, uh, I, I met, I reached out to our regional director of DPS, uh, Mr. Vico de Stallon, and he, he was, uh, very cooperative in trying to bring a, I guess, more clarity or resolution to the ongoing problems of, of making sure that our, our employees are compensated for doing, uh, additional work with this grant. We met on Friday, uh, he, he came down, also, Mr. Tufa Montanes, the auditor was there. He invited Jim Hop County Judge and his, uh, auditor's assistant to be there at the meeting. We also had, uh, Captain De La Gasta from DPS and, uh, and Nelson Barnes, who is a state prosecutor, uh, uh, working for all of this Operation Lone Star. Basically, the problem we've been having is we can't find a situation where we can, uh, compensate our employees. Just speaking with Judge Guerra, since it began eight months ago, he was able to, to get it on, get going, uh, select the way he was going to do it. And basically, it's what we've been trying to do, uh, since, since, uh, last July. And basically, he added a, uh, a salary increase to his employees. Uh, his, his employees that are, are tenured and are doing extra work, he basically said, you know what, I'm going to, fifteen thousand dollars or ten or whatever, divided by twenty-six pay periods, and this is what we're going to do. They've been reimbursed since July and August. Uh, they've done really well, uh, with, with the grant. They are in line to receive even more funding because of their situation. On the other hand, we weren't able to do that. So I mean hindsight, we weren't able to do it. I think if we would've just gone forward and, and done exactly what, what, what they did, we'd be in the same situation. We're not. So now we have this meeting and of course on the phone, and I, I just wanted to say, correct that because you heard it from him. I think last commissioner court meeting, he said he didn't understand as if, well, this is what's going on in Jim Hogg County and that's what we're doing. And so, and on the phone also was Mr. James Benz from the governor's office. And so they came up with three options that Zapata County, now that we're in the situation we're in, could come up with and, and move forward to participate in Operation All Star. One is, I'm in the budget and, and, and give them the percentage salary increase with the condition that these salary increases will be permanent. Now, I, I take, you know, every year the commissioners' court approves a budget to, to our employees and, and depending on how much, how much revenues come into our county, we either raise salaries, don't raise salaries, remove positions. We can even, you know, do away with some of the salary increases. So I, I think that would be subject to change from year to year as, as the commissioners' court moves forward. The other thing that was brought up is these employees could be full-time OLS employees. So basically, instead of being, I mean, they're county employees, but they would be a hundred percent paid out of OLS funds. I guess the caveat or the catch to this is they would have to provide a hundred percent OLS work. So it would not allow them to, to work on other aspects of county government. You know, I think OLS county government, I think ninety-nine percent of it, they're intertwined, it's the same thing. But, so that would be the catch there. The other thing that was brought up is these monies that the county would be saving from reimbursing pay on the same salary they're earning right now, which I think is not a good idea. And then at the end of the fiscal year, the monies that the county would be saving from the reimbursements from, from the state could be made in a one-time stipend bonus? I, I don't know if that's even possible. I, I, I don't think it.
I, I asked someone about that towards the end, Judge. I asked Judge Guerra because Jim Hogg does it. And I asked him, well, we're not supposed to give bonuses. And he said he, Juan Cruz figured it out where it's called an employee retention resolution. So that's something to look into with Mr. Juan Cruz to see how, how that's possible. Because our understanding was always that you couldn't do bonuses or stipends.
Well, I think the state constitution, my understanding is. You can't, as county employees, they can't receive benefits for work that is not done. But this would be many separate because they are working and they will be paid at the end of fiscal year. That's something that.
Probably would have to look into.
So anyway, we're, it seems we're stuck in the mud. We've got millions of dollars that we were not being able to use. The fiscal year is about to end, you know, September or August thirty-first. And Jim Hogg County, because they moved and, and were able to use those funds, are in, in line to receive substantial, additional funds. And because of our inability to, to get this done, we're in line to get probably less funds if any. I did speak with, and that's unfortunate, I did, excuse me, did speak with our county attorney regarding his employees and he's not a hundred percent on board on, on any of those three options. So I don't know where we're gonna end up with this, but it's just a shame that we weren't able to move forward when we had the opportunity to move forward last year and decided to butt heads for eight months. And certainly it wasn't, didn't work out in the best way for the county. So no action on this for now, I, I might bring it back. I can tell you, employees from the other departments, the county clerk, district clerks, are, are also probably not enthused about continuing to work for free, so.
Have you submitted any reimbursement, Judge? Because the last action we took where we paid out the bulk we paid out, the condition was that we're not gonna pay it now.
It hasn't been submitted because of our ongoing problem of how exactly are we gonna do this?
But we do have an item, an agenda for, for RFQs for a consultant, right?
Yes.
So that, that, that's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, but we got a few months to spend a couple million dollars that should've been used up entirely by now, but it hasn't and it's certainly unfortunate. I can't say I haven't tried it. All right, so no action on this one. Item number sixteen is to consider payment to Carlos Colina Vargas and Associates for applications of submission work done for the following projects. Bina Flores Neighborhood Park, five thousand one hundred thirty-five, Paco Lake Boat Ramp Site improvements, nine thousand. And the emergency, emergency operations center of ten thousand. These are all three grants that Mr. Colina Vargas and Associates is administering, so.
Has this work been done? Oh, have anybody checked?
Yes, I did reach out to Mr. Vargas and he did send me a, a report of how much work has been done. And most of these projects, the Bina Flores Neighborhood Project, I think ninety-five percent of the engineering work, the specs, have, has been submitted. Detective Parks Wildlife were pooled to, to go out for bids. The Boat Ramp Site, which is basically a, a, there's, there's no construction budget there. So the administrative work as far as the design has, for the most part, been completed and submitted. And the Emergency Operations Center also is, is far along as far as the design and, and that has been submitted also. And, you know, a lot of the work, we, we should be grateful to the premier engineering for really doing more, more work than, than is required of him. But he's been very helpful in, in making sure that these projects do get moving.
And these monies are coming out from the grant allocation, sure, Judge?
Yes, they'll get reimbursed, so.
Yes, so we have to pay upfront and then we'll actually reimburse them.
Motion to approve.
And you'll take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'll start in the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
And I'll be in conversation with them to see what, what the status is of those reimbursements also with the Colina Vargas.
Yeah, you know, you need to get in touch with them.
Yeah, I will.
I mean, there hasn't been a lot of money spent because there hasn't been any movement of.
Yeah, it's been.
But so basically, these are the first, maybe the first.
Years, yes.
So yeah, you need to make sure that, that those submissions are, are made. Item number seventeen is to approve payment of an invoice from Zapata Care Incorporated for the removal and replacement of a ten-ton condenser for Zapata Medical Clinic.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Solis. I did receive a call from the staff there at the medical clinic that AC went out. Apparently it was one of the original units. I think it was a really good unit, must've been thirty years old. Was there an, I guess, outreach by the mercy to maybe help us pay for this?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say I can reach out to them and see if they can pay half, you know?
Yes, we'll discuss.
How much is the amount?
Ten thousand eight hundred.
Ten thousand. Yes, I'll, you know, I can talk to.
I mean, if they can, it'd be helpful, but I mean, this, these, and it happened on one of those hundred-degree days that we've already experienced. So there, there's nothing to say, okay, well, let's wait.
Yeah, because it was one of the back units, I know it was one of the back. So I'll ask Mr., I'll talk to Mr. Garza.
Okay. We got a motion in the second, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen is to request qualifications for grant administrative services for Zapata County Operation All Star Grant.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second. I need a second to go, by Commissioner Solis. And, and so this will allow us to, I guess, we, once we, we hire him, I guess, we'll, we'll maybe be a little smoother as, as we continue to maybe stay in the grant or get, stay out of the grant or whatever. We'll, we'll see where they send, but we'll, we'll get out those qualifications. Got a motion in the second, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen is to approve payment of invoices to Marquinez Electrical Services for work yards Zapata County Pavilion, Zapata County Show Barn, and the Cola Luca and Lilia Martinez Learning Center.
Motion to approve.
I believe the total was thirty-one eighty, twenty-nine.
How much was the total, thirty-one thousand?
No, three thousand one hundred and eighty with twenty-nine cents totaling all three invoices.
Yeah, it's pretty different, basically then at the show barn, the pavilion and the learning center. Yeah, so that's fine.
The library, by the library next to the JP office?
Oh, you were wondering because.
Yeah, we can call it.
Yeah, I was just bringing.
It's not. It's gonna be the library again here, thirty-one eighty?
Thirty-one eighty is your amount?
I think that was.
Three thousand one hundred and eighty?
With twenty-nine cents.
Okay, motion to approve.
I'll put that in my motion till we get thirty-one eighty.
Motion by Mendosa, second by Commissioner Solis, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to approve the hiring of Tufa Montalves for slot number five, Department twelve, Special Road and Bridge, precinct two, at ten dollars an hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one to transfer Armita Chapo Junior from Road and Bridge, precinct three, fifteen, dash zero one three, slot number two, to non-department golf course maintenance, ten, dash four oh nine, slot number seven, at ten dollars an hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Mendosa, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Twenty-two to hire Valero Rreal Junior in the Road and Bridge, precinct three, fifteen, dash zero one three, slot number two, at ten dollars an hour.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Garza, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty-three to approve the purchase installation of a heavy-duty electric stove in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars in line item ten, dash four oh nine, dash four three four three zero. And this is for the Regional General, I believe?
In, in conversations with them, it's for the Regional General.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Mendosa, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Twenty-four, to approve the resolution to approve the temporary closure of US Highway eighty to host the seventh annual Autism Awareness Five K Run slash Walk on April first, motion of approval. Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Mendosa. Where did you start, Eddie, or here at the courthouse or?
We're gonna start at the swimming pool.
Okay.
And it'll end there. We had to change it because on the location from the pavilion area, there's a lot of dogs and it causes.
We need to get my thing on.
Yeah.
It's part of the obstacle course there.
Yeah.
Right there, do you run or you get it?
For their safety, we had to move it.
So it's, it was on Second Avenue then.
Yeah.
And head.
Head north and then it'll end there.
Commissioner, head, head.
Motion in the second.
Yeah. Yes, we have a huge straight option, yeah.
So we got a motion in the second for that?
Solis and Mendosa, yes.
Although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Twenty-five, to accept the resignation of Rosario V. Garza from Zapata County Nutrition Center, the San Ignacio Site, Detective, opposed to seven.
I think that should be a retirement judge, not a resignation.
She is retired.
She is retired. And you know how many years of service she's been there for a long time?
Okay, yeah.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Solis, to accept the retirement. And the luck to the Garza, back her further service.
Services.
Although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty-six is to advertise to hire for the Zapata County Nutrition Center, San Ignacio Site manager position. Motion by Commissioner Morales.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mendosa, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
So this would be going to the paper for you, Eddie, or through this?
I haven't spoken to her about advertising.
Also, I wanted to mention, I know Mr. Carlos Ramirez also retired. He was helping out over here at the.
Was there dozer operator?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a lot of retirements this month.
He just retired this Friday.
This past Friday was his last day.
Yeah, twenty-nine years of service.
He was a recent one, right?
Yes, thank you.
Dozer operator.
We had quite a few.
Of applicants?
Uh, no, that retired this month.
But we need a dozer operator.
Yeah, because I have one, I remember saying that, that we need one there like.
Yeah, I've had some calls, I'm interested in individuals, so we can advertise that.
They can go and pick up an application now.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number twenty-seven is to approve partial payment of four thousand dollars to the fortune by CFO work done at the Zapata County Airport Plan Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Garza. I know that, that fence project is moving along.
It is, Judge, but we just have to stop because of that.
We've got some, yes.
But Mikey said by the thirtieth, this week, he should, they should relocate it so they can continue.
Yeah, I think there's two electric poles right on the.
They're on the fence line, property line, so we need to relocate them, that way they can continue on with the fencing. And then they should finish within a day after that, so.
Very good, got a motion in the second, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight is to consider and award bid proposals for the new fuel farm and system improvement at the Zapata County Airport, and I know.
On that one, Judge, I know you also have something here.
Yes.
The bid calculation, which is the three bids submitted, one of them, they didn't have a bid bond, so it was just two. And the longest one is eight hundred thousand, and that's the recommendation of the engineer from Brandon Corporation, and.
It's D and H, United Fueling Solutions.
That's correct, and then originally the engineer's opinion was seven hundred and fifty-four thousand for the complete project, but, you know, went up forty-six thousand, forty-fifty, so.
I think as a bid, the grant is for five hundred and fifty thousand?
Five hundred and fifty thousand and it's a seventy-five, twenty-five grant, so.
Commissioners, so we'll have to be coming up with basically three hundred and fifty thousand or, yeah.
Yes, three hundred and fifty.
I like a motion to go with the recommendation of D and H, United Fueling Solutions.
Yeah, we need additional two hundred and fifty thousand and that will be coming from the Enterprise Fund, you know, for the Enterprise Fund.
That's correct.
We have those funds.
We have those funds available.
Yeah, we have.
So motion by Commissioners Solis to approve the loan bidder of D and H United Fueling Solutions, seconded by Commissioner Garza. And once, once they're awarded, it shouldn't take very long to get that.
Yes, Judge, it should, it's been taking long just simply because of that. So as soon as it's over, I'm gonna call KC, so they can move forward.
Okay.
We have a scope of time, Mr. Morton, or?
It depends on the tanks because, you know, they have to fabricate and things like that. But he said maybe three or four months, maybe sooner, depending the availability of the tanks.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion in the second, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I know we, we actually, surprisingly, there's a lot of activity at the airport, but we don't have any fuel to sell. Those bunk, those aging fuel tanks did not pass the specs. And we were able to, you know, Texas Attorney Montes, in efforts, able to acquire that grant from Texas Aviation for the majority of the cost of those tanks, they're very expensive, so it'll be a very good project for the, for the county to have. Item thirty-one is to request the use of the golf course on May thirteen, twenty twenty-three for the benefit of the men, men's axe retreat.
Motion to approve.
Yes, I'll second.
I mean, in, in the contract that we have, I, I don't think we have a say in, as, as far as the operator, I think, would, would have to determine that.
That was my understanding, I'm not sure what it's on the agenda.
So I, I think, yeah.
Have you been?
Whoever the operator is would have a, a, his say and of course would charge the, the fee for using the golf course. And I think that's, I think the only, I believe, the restriction that the court play, placed on the operator is that golf course not be used for, for political gain.
Okay.
But that, that's the only restrict, other than that, the operator has all the ability to, to determine what the.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Guider is the one that requested, did already, I believe, talked to Andy and Mr.
What's on the table?
Okay, so, yeah, so there's no action on, on thirty-one. So we've got some consent items, we've got a, a street light, item number thirty-four on seventeen, fifteen, Guerrero Avenue. Motion approved by Commissioner, Solis, second by Commissioner Morales.
I did need, oh, we still need to make a correction, it's in precinct four.
Precinct four, yes.
Okay, precinct four.
You only got the other light.
He would've gone just to create another light.
An honest mistake.